Good evening, I'd like to call the March 2nd, 2020 meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Brenner?
Here.
Mrs. Derry?
Here.
Mrs. Partee?
Here.
Mr. Wise?
Here.
Mr. Earl?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Will all those who are able, please rise to the podium, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will start with the approval of minutes. There is a set of minutes in your council members from February 19, 2020. Is there a motion?
We'll start with Mayor, approve the minutes.
There is a motion by Mr. Rock to approve the minutes of February 19, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Second is by Mr. Gould. All those in favor... I'm sorry. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Brenner? Aye. Mrs. Derry?
Aye.
Mrs. Partee?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. We'll now move on to comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Total time allowed, fifteen minutes per meeting unless otherwise permitted by Council ordinance number 91-25. Is there anybody here who would care to address the city this evening? If so, please come up to the podium, say your name and address for the record. Please be sure to speak into the microphone for the purposes of the record.
I'm back.
Hello, students.
Like Harry Truman. Give 'em hell, Harry. My name is Kate Uller. I live on Fenwick Road. I've lived there for almost forty years, but I've lived in the city of University Heights for sixty years. I get my information regarding the city governance from the internet, from Facebook, from LinkedIn, from sources other than the council meetings. I haven't been able to meet at the council meetings, but after the million-dollar bridge loan, I said, "I have to get here." So, one of the things I want to bring up is if transparency is the goal of Mr. Brennan, as you stated early in your tenure, then all the council members knew of the expenses and the rapidly growing expenses. And I mentioned to Mrs. Partee in the summertime at Heinz' and she said, "We're checking on that." Those were her exact words. And I thought, "Well, okay, I like the way women do things." So, what were you going to use as collateral for this million-dollar loan? The collateral belongs to us. So, I'm confused about that. And why did it take so long for all these expenditures? Why did it take so long for all this spending to finally get checked by Michelle Wise, as I understand, another woman? It takes a woman to do some things. She was the first one that I read that seemed to take hold of the reins and said, "Maybe we ought to talk about this." So, I congratulate you, Michelle, for doing that, for that initiative, and for getting it, all of you, for getting it under control. Another question I have is, Mr. Brennan, why is a resident of University Heights, did you endorse the school levy? You know, you made a lot of enemies in University Heights when you did that. University Heights, now this is long before your time and even mine, was always a private school city. We had the Hebrew schools, Hathaway Brown, Jaseau School was the largest grade school of the largest elementary school when I was BTO president with almost seven-hundred students, and we only had from first to eighth grade then. So, it was always a private school city. The state put us together with Cleveland Heights. And when I ran for council and I ran for public office, the request of the people was, "Can we get out of this CHUS bind?" Because we hardly get any representation in the University Heights. So, our taxes are egregious. We all know that. Beautiful homes stand on the market too long because of the taxes. So, I welcome the new tax, the new council people, especially two women who are here. Beryl Rothschild was a goddess to me, I felt. So, welcome, welcome, Justin. So, wonderful city, wonderful city. We'll get it all under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Uller. Is there anybody else who care to address the city this evening? Mr. Smalley?
Good evening. Kevin Smalley with First Energy. Just stopping in to basically say hi, introducing myself to some of the new members of council. Do you have my contact information by chance? I will absolutely get you some here in a second. Just doing a typical rundown. We're coming up on storm season. If you have any issues, always feel free to give me a call. I'll find out whatever outage information I can for you, mayor and council. If there are outages, the quickest way to get something remedied is making sure we call the outage hotline or reporting it on the internet, on the web, use your phone or anything like that. A lot of times I see that constituents might call the city, and then the city's calling me, and then it's a little name of telephone, making sure, trying to get all the information right. They call in first, they get a ticket, and then kind of fill their information. Me, I can follow up and find out what's going on as we get into storm season. Other than that, if there's any concerns that you have, please feel free to filter them up to me. As always, I'll get that to you as soon as I possibly can. If there's any questions for me, any concerns?
For the benefit of our newer members of council, working with Mr. Smalley, he came in to take care of University Heights on behalf of First Energy around the same time that I took office. And harkening back to the storm that he had, took down trees all over Cleveland Heights, took down trees all over Shaker and Lynnhurst and Pepper Pike and...
University Heights.
About a tree and a half here. Mr. Smalley was in constant contact with the city, was constantly there to approve me night and day for about four days straight as First Energy worked to get everybody's power back on here in the city. We were fortunate that the portion of the city that got hit was also the portion that had just been the subject of our tree pruning program. So, I think a lot of the weaker trees and limbs had been taken care of in an orderly fashion just before the storm, but it was nevertheless significant and traumatic to residents of this city. And I don't know when Mr. Smalley slept over those four days because night and day, I'd wake up, I'd text him at three in the morning, and he'd respond a couple minutes later. So, I don't know. Thank you. Thank you for all you do, Mr. Smalley. We appreciate your engagement and attention and individual concerns as well of various residents who have a particular problem at their address or on their street, the street light or transformer or what happened. So, newer members of council is going to provide, he gives direct contact information, and he does that because he wants to make himself available to us so that he can better serve our residents. So, thank you.
Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening? Well, very good then. We will move on to reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. Today, I rode with Chief Bob Perko to Richfield to pick up the city's new ladder truck, and it is a beauty. It is designed to help us fight fires and save lives here in University Heights and in the greater Heights Hill Crest community. Over the next few weeks, our firefighters will train on the new ladder truck and then will zone the surface, putting our fire department at its best readiness in over a decade. The citizens of University Heights and the beneficiaries of this much-needed upgrade in our safety equipment, in the last twenty-six months, we have made substantial progress in the restoration of our fire department. I thank the Ladder Truck Committee in the fire department, Chief Perko, Executive Captain Boyle, Lieutenant Kevin Bonhais. I thank University Heights City Council, who in late 2017 voted unanimously to proceed with the acquisition of this ladder truck. I'll specifically mention three members who are no longer here on the council who were part of that unanimously, Councilwoman Pam Cameron, Councilman Steve Sims, and Councilman Eric Weisman for their support. We've often heard that how we budget is a statement of values, and I will take that a step further. How we ultimately devote the people's resources, are those values exemplified and realized? And here, at the most local level, we are on the front line delivering the services that residents expect, deserve, and require, and by require, I also mean, indeed. At its basic level, we agree that we all need fire protection and EMS, police protection and law enforcement, solid waste collection, snow removal, streets that are maintained so as to be safe to drive on, walk on, or bike on, buildings and housing that are safe, sewers and infrastructure that work, and building and maintaining a tax base to support it all. Upon that we build, there are differences of degree, the number of programs and offerings in our safety services, how we collect the trash, how and where we salt what we collect, when, what we do to keep our housing attractive, what we do to welcome residents and businesses and encourage them to stay in our city, what we do to build community through activities, through events, through telling the story of the good works we do, through creating the energy and enthusiasm for the city that hasn't been seen here before and is embedded by any of our neighbors. No, we'll never be Beechwood or Cleveland Heights or Shaker, and neither will any of them be University Heights. That all said, as your mayor, safety director, and your civic cheerleader, I would be remiss if I did not share a phone call that I took last week. A resident called me, a widow in her nineties. She and her husband made this city their home over sixty years ago. She's a proud Heights grad, with kids too. The home she lives in, she is the remaining original owner. She called to ask what services the city has for seniors, for people aging in place. And I've spoken with this woman before, and I know that she's on social security, and I know she uses SNAP benefits for food. I know she's had a raccoon problem at her house last year, and our animal warden was out to help. And I know she's already aware of the fine work that Paul Sewell and Village in the Heights do for her and for other seniors throughout the community, but that's them, that's not us. And I know she's aware of our arrangement with Cleveland Heights to use their community center in Montcello for senior programming, but for her, it feels so far away. And I know she's aware of our senior happenings, events with Walter Stinson, 2:00 p.m. every Thursday at the library. And I know that she knows about the lockbox program for all residents, but especially geared for seniors. I know she uses senior transportation connection to keep her medical appointments, and I know she doesn't drive much, and never at night, because as she explained to me, she'd come out to one of our meetings and address this as a group. Every time I've spoken with this senior resident, for all the things we do, I feel that what I have to say to her is somehow not enough. Even as she tells me that she's read the mosaic and she felt that things are going well in the city and was complimentary to me and to all of us on council for the work that we do and all of us in administration, that in sixty years in the city, she says she's never seen anything like it, and even so, I could not help but wonder if we should not be doing more. This resident seems to think so. And she asked me if I could pass that along to the members of council, since she could not be here, and so I told her that I would. That people like her, who have worked hard and lived here their whole lives, are nevertheless in need in our community, not of a handout, but of support. Finding them where they are and taking better care, passing that along tonight is something I could easily do. The harder thing is what more, if anything, we can do. We can say we support things, but then if we mean it, actions must follow those words. Commitment must precede that action and even before that discussion. So, tonight, I just offer that as food for thought, not as a specific charge or call to do a specific thing, but in hopes of having that conversation in the community and on council, of what we do and what we may do better for the seniors in our community. Thank you. This concludes my remarks. We turn now to the agenda items. First item is ordinance 2020-13, authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPAC's 2020 Energize Community Grant. This is on second reading. Mr. Brogan Myers, I believe, addressed us on this last time. There's really nothing to be added, but it is a periodic, this ordinance is a periodic matter that we raise in order to accept grant funds from NOPAC. That's the time and topic here in the first reading. Does anybody have any questions or have any comments on this before we take a motion? Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2020, or should it be? So... We have a motion by Mr. Gould and a second by Mr. Gould. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing done, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll on the board?
Mrs. Brenner? Aye. Mrs. Derry?
Aye.
Mrs. Partee?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Next is letter D, ordinance 2020-16, authorizing permanent appropriations for current and other expenditures of the city of University Heights, Ohio, for the period commencing January 1, 2020 and ending December 31, 2020. This is on first reading. Ask Finance Director Mr. Kennedy if he would say a few words about this.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, this is representative of the budget after having been through a series of meetings, discussions, and judgments, and reviews, both with members of council, members of the Finance Advisory Committee from the city itself and from all the directors and department heads. I hope that this will be acceptable to council. From a global standpoint, we have eliminated the need to borrow any money. It was a serious concern in the council, so moving forward for 2020, we will not need to borrow any money to continue through the end of December. We will use some fund balances, as we discussed at the last Finance Advisory Committee meeting. We went back through, took some of the recommendations that came to us in both of those meetings and in subsequent discussions with some other folks, and got down the difference in the general fund to approximately $97,000. A big portion of that ninety-seven is obviously that last payroll, but we're comfortable in the fact that we've made the adjustments through all the different appropriation lines to get to the point where we'll just use a small portion of that balance, the existing general fund balance, to help cover that extra expense of that year-end. We also propose to use the $307,000 that originally was our financing alternative, and to use the balances in the street maintenance and repair fund to do those five streets, as recognized by the city engineer and service director. So, we're happy that that job will get accomplished this year as well. The total revenue projected for the general fund in 2020 is now estimated at $15.5 million. The annual spending is approximately $15.6 million, so that deficit is $97,413. On an all-funds basis, when you take into account all the special revenue funds, trust funds, and capital improvement funds, total revenue is projected at $18.9 million. Total expense is set at $19.4 million. So, that's an overall gap of all funds of $541,318. And again, that'll be made up from existing balances that we have to borrow in money to make up any of that shortfall. In terms of some of the major changes to the budget, there was a lot of discussion about the capital fund. We did adjust the capital fund to eliminate the appropriation requested for new police and fire vehicles and two scooters and a leak back from the service department. We hope, as we discussed at the Finance Advisory Meeting, that we can come back at some point during the year if the need presents itself. The council considered that at some future point in time, but for now, we did take those out of the budget request. We also removed all the revenue associated with the note sales, because that has to come out too. So, that's why the revenue projections declined a little bit. The capital improvement fund will support payment on the new fire truck lease installment, which the truck was outside just a few months ago. Second installment on the VIP finance software. Those were two items that were committed in last year's budget by authorizations by council, so we have made provision to make those two payments out of the capital fund in 2020. We also have $84,000 in safety gear for fire department. I believe that was discussed at the Finance Advisory Committee meeting. $25,000 in additional equipment for the truck that was outside, and if you remember, that's going to be partially offset by the sale of the old truck to equip the bay. So, that was about $16,500 of the $25,000 that they needed. The other major item to be purchased out of the capital fund will be a new dump truck for the service department, and that will be charged amongst two different capital funds. Capital improvement fund will pick up $66,000. The cost of that, the other $99,000, those are based on estimated costs that come from the sewer capital. So, again, we plan on using the existing fund balances to support the gap between projected revenue and projected expenses. Again, the thing to come out of this meeting is to thank everybody for their input and cooperation, and also sort of believe strongly that we're not part of the pressure.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kennedy or any comments that they're willing to share at this time? Mrs. Smalley?
Thank you. I just wanted to probably thank the council, mayor, and the finance director, as well as the advisory committee. This budget became somewhat public over the last few months, and it was at times tedious and also at times controversial, but in the end, everybody collaborated and compromised, and the budget is balanced. I've always said that our city is small, we don't have a lot of commercial revenue, and we need to live within our needs. And what the Finance Committee is going to do going forward is create a type of strategic planning committee that we'll hopefully meet once a month, so we don't get into this, shall we say, pickle in December next year, so we can have a short-term five, a long-term ten-year projection, so we really can get a handle on all the great things that are happening, what kind of avenues are going to be coming in from that, and also what type of expenses are going to be going forward.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Smalley.
Mr. Rock? I just have a question. Now, at the last meeting, we talked about all the capital purchases, and you mentioned the dump truck. You didn't mention any police cars, which are those now been removed from the budget?
Yes.
So, no new police cars?
We took out the police cars, fire prevention vehicles, two scooters for the service department, and a vehicle.
Just the dump truck?
Yeah. Some things that probably should be mentioned along those lines. We're undergoing a solid waste. So, initially proposed the budget, we did not include a garbage truck, which we would otherwise be ready for at this time, partly because until we commit to either the present system or some other system, it may dictate what kind of equipment we're getting, thus not purchasing the garbage truck at this juncture and also not voting for that garbage truck, for those voters at this juncture made sense. Likewise, I know there's been some question about what we need a dump truck for. I think there is a misconception in the community that I've noticed in talking to the residents. The dump trucks are used essentially for snow removal and salting, and while we call them dump trucks, and I've had folks say, "Oh, well, isn't that just a salt truck, plow truck?" Yes, it is. It's the dump truck. Once we put, it's a plow truck. Once we put a plow on it, it's salting. Once we put salt in the back of it. So, we have one of these trucks that is, where the frame is so corroded that it's no longer suitable for snow removal. If we were to put plow on the front of it, it'd go out of bond with it, probably snap the frame before long. The weight of the salt in the back would probably cause the frame to collapse or crumble on the backside. The only thing that is used for it at this juncture is in the leaf collection. It is used to haul leaves, which pack-a-lawn boy leaves in the back of the truck, and somehow they're not as full around as dead, so it's better than salt. So, police has, the police department has reduced their fleet after a review that occurred during the budget process. There are two vehicles that, once they reach their natural and won't be replaced. So, that is one of the things that developed through the budgetary process, that there is a production by two from eighteen to sixteen, ultimately, the fleet, noting that one of those vehicles, the eighteenth and now the sixteenth vehicle, is a boom truck, and is not used by officers, but rather is used for sign installation and other tasks of that sort. I may be going into some minutia here that many of you know about, but this is more for the benefit of the community and also simple for the residents. So, that is a large part of how we got from being the, you know, that.
I'd like to piggyback on that, that I feel, you know, during the committee meetings, one of the committee meetings, I felt that the process was, this was a good process, it was very collaborative. Everybody on council had a very cohesive coming together of ideas and how to turn this budget. I remember last year, we were budgeting a two-and-a-half-million-dollar deficit, so to get it down to almost net even, it was spectacular that we were going to cut two million out, so our general fund deficit of $97,000. Understandably, because of the twenty-seven payroll that happens every eleven years, I feel comfortable with that. I know we're not voting on that today, but I feel comfortable with that because of that payroll. Also, the street fund, I just want to preface that when we were reviewing the streets, that street fund balance was high, as you said, it was, what, $600,000, $300,000 higher than we needed to maintain it at, which is why we felt comfortable using $300,000 of the six for the street. So, I'm comfortable with that as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gould. Does anybody have any, would care to add or say a few things?
I'm just really proud of the way council and the department directors were willing to, you know, look at things with a sharp eye and a scalpel. I think somebody suggested that, you know, there wasn't a slashing, we weren't gutting safety forces, but that it was a surgical process, and it got us into what it really was. This is my first go-around with this latest budget, and I was really impressed. It was really interesting.
Does anybody have anything to add?
One of the things I found especially impressive this time is, because this was the first time we did a budget with Mr. Kennedy, and I felt that we benefited greatly from the expertise and experience that he brings to the position, and it allowed us to see a lot of different alternatives in a way that certainly I have not had the pleasure of enjoying in the budget process.
the budget process since I've been here until going through this budget. So, maybe this, I suppose, but I'd like to thank the rest of you as well for your efforts through the process, and the next step, because this is just...
Last we had our finance and council suggested hundreds of thousands of dollars of potential savings, which responsibility and, I think, task is appropriate review, so I just wanted to thank you, the department heads, the chiefs, for going and doing the hard work of examining those suggestions and making the appropriate cuts to bring us down to the budget which is within our means. I think, in reference to some of the safety items and potential purchases that are not included in this budget, Director Kennedy made reference to the fact that budgets can adapt to changes in demand, and budgets can adapt to realities on the ground as the lead goes on. And I know that I've spoken with Chief Perko and Chief Rogers, and expect that if at any time the high level of safety protection that we expect in the risk gap doesn't yet be met, given the spending that is authorized in this current budget, that they will return to council, let us know, and we can make a combination at that time. But I also want to kind of echo something that Vice Mayor Weiss said, which is that this process of strategic planning goes hand in hand with demand that we stay within our means, because it's not just we're not going to spend it, it's that we're going to spend smart. And I think that this process that we're beginning with in this month is the first step in really reimagining the way that we work it out. It's not just we're buying a dump truck because if you put anything beyond leaves inside it, it crumbles to the ground, but because it's time to look at refreshing either our fire trucks or our police trucks or our service departments.
Thank you for participating in the process.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. White. And I'll add that I also welcome that we are taking a more proactive approach, and delighted that the Finance Committee will be meeting on a regular basis to do that, so that is something that certainly we all benefit from. I do think that I would be beating it at horsemen over the years of lack of planning that preceded all of us here, and how we continue to suffer the consequences of that. Something is, we've done more the last couple of years, I think, to move this forward, but there's still much to do, and Vice Mayor Weiss knows that, you all know that, I know that, and we're going to continue to work together to improve that process, because there are certain things that every city must have, and there are certain things that, there are certain realities about the size of this city and the size of this budget that we have to wrestle with in order to deliver to the residents the services that they expect and deserve and demand, and still find a way to do it within the confines of what we have. So, all the reason that we do have to be smart on it.
Does anybody have anything further they'd like to add? Hold on. I think our first reading has been had, and you will have this back up for the next irregular council meeting. Thank you. And we now move to item C, motion to approve the 2019-1 tree pruning and removal contract change order number one, in the amount not to exceed $14,620. Mr. Corney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything, Council? Our 2019-1 tree pruning program is underway, and we are actually quite close to completing it. As part of that contract, there were codes given to each of the trees, and the tree company was supposed to go out and inspect those trees and make sure that the codes that were provided to those trees are appropriate for the tree. Out of 780 some trees, 20 trees, the contractor found defects in the trees that are serious enough that they need to be removed. So they provided us with a list. I went out and inspected the trees and agreed with the contractor. Our consulting arborist, Jason Moles, also did the same thing, went out, looked at the trees with the contractor, and agreed as well. So there's 20 trees out of our 780 that require some additional work, and will actually require a removal. So you're looking at a list of 20 trees that all require removal in addition to what the contract called for. We asked the contractor to give us a quote on the additional work. He did so. That quote coincided directly with the contract amounts that he had bid for other trees of the same size that were to be removed, so we concurred that the pricing was fair under the existing contract, and then we asked them for the credit of the trees that were not pruned, because they needed to be removed instead, so they provided us the credit. So what you're looking at in the memo I provided to you is a recommendation that we proceed with the 20 removals. The original contract was for $89,480, or $98,000. A change in work, if we were to do the work without a credit, was $17,700. However, we get a $3,080 credit for the work they didn't perform, so if they now performed, then we now perform that work, and it leaves us with a balance of $14,620, which we have to add to the contract. So requesting council's approval for a change order, I call a change order number one, in the amount of $14,620. That will bring the total contract to $104,118, and this money is available in our shade tree fund, provided to you with the number of shade tree fund.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Corney, Mr. Earl?
Yeah, the 20, I don't know what percentage that represents, but is that average? Is that good or...? I think it's actually smaller than some of the previous years. However, it is what it is. We wouldn't take a tree now unless we had to. Right. In this case, they have to go. They're hazardous. I'm kind of a pro-er, I'm just curious. So are these all different sizes, trees? Yes. If you look at the attached list to the memo that I provided, you'll see that they provide you with, you actually have to go back to the original contract to see the sizes of trees that are not listed here. However, you can tell kind of by the pricing. If you look down the list to item 410 and 416, you see two rather large trees. These are the last two trees on Sillsby Road, on the south side of the road as you approach South Green Road. One's a very large silver maple with multiple stem trunk, and it's failing. In fact, we had one of the main limbs break off of it already, and the next tree down the road as you go back westward is a very large oak tree that obviously has been struck by lightning. You see the lightning burns down both sides of the tree. The main trunk of that tree is dead, above the 30-foot level, so eventually it's going to snap off and come down. Yeah, the silver maple don't last long. The second tree's a red oak.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Earl. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Corney? Any discussion on the motion before us? Owe the motion. So anyone who'd like to make a motion to approve? I would give that motion. Thank you, Mr. Earl. The motion approved by Mr. Earl. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. White. Any discussion on this motion? Saying none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll of motion.
Ms. Whitel. Hi, Mrs. Beery. Hi, Mrs. Fardee. Hi, Mrs. Lawrence. Hi, Mrs. Earl.
Hi.
Mrs. White.
Hi.
Mrs. Bill.
Hi.
Very good motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Next up, it is motion, item D, motion to approve GT Environmental Solid Waste Collection Analysis Cost Change Order not to exceed $3,900. Mr. Corney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. March 3rd, City of University Heights entered into a contract with GT Environmental to update our 2008 solid waste rubbish collection analysis study. As part of their proposal, the consulting GT Environmental provided us with an estimate of 91 man-hours to complete their work, with an estimated cost of $13,854, which we brought to council and was approved. At that time, the completion date was supposed to be July 31st of 2019. Since that time, we've done several different analyses as requested by council, and we've extended their schedule to today. We still remain to have one meeting left with them. We'd like them to come in, present their final report to council, and that will be included in this change order. So I'm requesting council to approve $3,900 in additional man-hours to have GT complete their study and present it to council.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Any questions for Mr. Corney?
Mr. Corney, will that include any questions that council has at the committee meeting as well?
The amount that currently is in here does already cover what has happened to date. Yes, so all the questions that we had at the committee level have been included.
I'm sorry, Mr. Earl, are you asking about respective questions or just up to date?
Well, they've created a draft report, which you've sent out, which was responsive to the questions that council asked last year of the Service Committee. I anticipate having an additional Service Committee meeting, and you've said that this $3,900 includes their response to council's questions at their final presentation. Prior to that final presentation, the report would be before committee, before it's passed out to council. Will maybe, does this amount contemplate their presence at that meeting?
No, it does not. They have provided a written response to council's questions from that committee, and it comes in the form of appendix D. I believe we provided you with appendix D?
I think it's been distributed to the council.
Okay. And that was their response to all of those questions. We were not anticipating another committee and another round of questions.
Okay, Mr. Rock.
Yes, Mayor? I sort of have a problem with this, because when, you know, in my profession, architect and consultant, I have to provide a proposal of a given number of man-hours. We oftentimes exceed the man-hours, and that's on us. Where I have a problem with this is when they give us an estimated man-hours and a cost, and when we approve this, we said it was not to exceed this amount of money, that should really be on them to understand they have to keep this within the number of man-hours proposed, and not come to us later and say, "Oh, I spent more hours, it took longer than I thought it would take, you guys asked too many questions," or for whatever reason. I sort of have a problem with that. It's part of the contract, they were supposed to meet with us, air committee, and prepare a final report, and this change order is asking to cover the cost of that final report that was always supposed to be part of the agreement in the original amount. So why they need more money when, again, that's on them. They didn't estimate it correctly. It happens to us all the time. Sometimes we're under, sometimes we're over, but this was a not-to- exceed contract. I have angst against this one.
Mr. Corney, was there, refresh my memory, election, was there a set number of meetings and a set schedule that we were to follow based upon previous agreement?
There was a schedule, and it did include, as councilman Rock indicates, the final report and coming to council. However, we stretched the schedule out over six months on them, and we also required them to go to Safety and Utilities Committee in extra time. And that's why I was also indicating if we went back a third time, it would again exceed what their estimate was for committee meetings.
So they were only supposed to come to the committee one time?
And respond to committee's questions.
Okay, and they came a second time.
Correct.
So the value to come a second time is $3,900, as I see here, because the final presentation, we were getting any. To me, I think that's a stretch. It was two hours of their time. That's a heck of a global rate that I wish I had, but to me, it's excessive.
As I indicated, it also includes the time they took to do appendix D, which was a reevaluation of man-hours for work that the Service Department does, and also included review of other cities that they weren't originally anticipating and we didn't anticipate.
Yeah, there were things that we added that were outside of the original scope.
Right.
Mrs. White.
Thank you. Did the company inform you that it was beyond their scope before they came to the second meeting? Do you recall?
No, no, they did not have a discussion that that was outside the scope.
I think, I'm not sure if we would have necessarily had them come back out, you know, if we knew that we would be charged above or beyond. I know, I didn't recall that original contract, so is there any way to negotiate the $3,900?
I've already attempted that, actually, so I'm kind of where I am with them. If we want them to attend that last council meeting, they're asking for additional hours.
But you know the council meeting wasn't original.
That's correct, yes. But the original was also 91 man-hours, and they're welcome for that.
I have not taken a look at the contract language and the context of this request, and I think we want to have a little more of a sense of what it was that's happened that's outside of the scope of the agreement, but it's often the case for vendors that they have hard luck with cities because the amount that's appropriated is the amount that's appropriated, the amount that's agreed on in the contract is static for the deliverables that are promised. So they are going to have to deliver that final product to you. Whether there's an issue there, I mean, I would want to take a look at the language. Do we have a timing issue in terms of deliverable orders as something that can be looked at prior to our next council meeting?
I don't think there's any harm in waiting till the next meeting or to take some time to look over the original contract. Mr. Corney, are you aware of it?
No. I mean, it may be that if the law department is opining that there's no obligation on the part of the city, but there's an ongoing obligation on the part of the vendor that we have, you know, significantly more leverage to come to a agreement that says, "Framed to council."
I'd like to better understand if you, there wasn't included here a breakdown of that $3,900? Is that, was that...
Right, I didn't provide you that. I can provide you the breakdown.
So I'd actually like to refer that to the law department, and I'd like the law department to...
We'll take a look at that and look at the language, and have a discussion on scope, and render an opinion.
Thank you.
And then that opinion will be shared with the administration of the council.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corney. Any further? Do we have a motion to table?
Mayor, I'll move to table this agenda item.
Get to the next meeting? Yes, very good. Give a motion by Mr. Rock to table item D to the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Beery. Very good, thank you. Is there any discussion on motion table? Okay, all those, sorry, Mrs. Thomas, can you please go?
Ms. Whitel. Hi, Mrs. Beery. Hi, Mrs. Fardee. Hi, Mrs. Lawrence. Hi, Mrs. Earl.
Hi, Mr. Rock. Hi.
Mr. Bill. Hi.
Very good, matters table. Mr. Corney, if you're working with Mr. Rock, though, it's going to be...
Yes, I would like to, yes.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is item E, motion to hold executive session. We need the following, straight to meaningful purpose of discussing personnel legal and for real estate matters. I'm not aware of anything that requires an executive session this evening, unless somebody else has something, I'm going to suggest that this pass right here, and that we proceed then to reports, and we'll go to finance. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to working on the budget, I just want to let everybody know that we are developing purchasing policies, fixed asset policies. We also started a project to...
In addition to working on the budget, just want to let everybody know that we are developing purchasing policies, fixed asset policies. We also started a project to work on a new employee manual and as far as the audit goes, we did have an entrance conference last week and right now, we have two sets of auditors. We have the financial audit and we have the GAAP conversion for our financial statements. Both those audits are about 30 to 35 percent complete as of today.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCordy. Any questions for Mr. McCordy? All right, seeing none, proceeding to Director of Law, Mr. McCordy.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to let council know that we continue to work with the owner of the KFC, former KFC property. We had another conference call with the owners of the property at 2115 South Taylor along with representatives from ExxonMobil. We're anticipating receiving a schedule of inspection and construction from ExxonMobil within the next couple of weeks and we have another follow-up conference call scheduled in advance of the April BZA hearing so that when the owner of the property comes back into the BZA in April, there is hopefully a schedule in place for completion of construction of the environmental improvements. In addition, I had a meeting last week with Mr. Grogan Myers and Councilwoman Blackfeld to discuss updates to the rental registration ordinance. I anticipate having a draft of a revised rental registration ordinance to Councilwoman Blackfeld within the next couple of weeks and my understanding is at that point it'll go to committee and then come to council. I'm long overdue on reviewing an ordinance that Mrs. Drucker prepared regarding home-based businesses. I will get that back to her in the next couple of weeks. We continue to work on our development agreement with University Square. We have a conference call with the developer later this week. On that matter, that is continuing to move forward. And I would request that at some point in the process of drafting the employee handbook, that it make its way through the law departments, we can comment on that. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCordy. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McCordy? All right, very good. Next is public safety. We'll start with police. Chief Rogers?
Good morning, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Fire? Chief Perk.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I just want to make a few comments about the new ladder truck. I'm sure you haven't taken a chance to see it outside tonight. This was a long, tedious project started back in 2018. Our community members put in hundreds of hours, planning, researching, collaborating with other departments to gain information, working with the vendors and the sales reps and they really did a great job. I commend them for that. It's been a long project and it's finally here. I also want to echo what the mayor said and thank him for his report as well as council. New members of council are here in the form of the first that the mayor mentioned. Also, Councilman Rock is the chair of the Safety Committee. All of our Safety Committee meetings we had about the truck and timing phases and also for the residents because a lot of people have come up to me and asked me, "How do I like my new truck?" Or, "Do departments new truck?" And the reality is, it's the community and the residents whose truck. So hopefully, we will get a ceremony put together here as soon as the weather breaks, possibly sometime in the end of April, we'll invite all the residents to come see their new truck. Couple of questions were asked outside, so I just wanted to clarify for the room. Someone had asked what a quint actually was, the five functions. So it's the pump that pumps the water on the truck, the water itself on the truck, all the fire hose that's on the truck, as well as the aerial ladder on the ladder truck and then the portable ground ladders that are also on the truck. Then there has to be so many gallons, so many feet of those, so many feet of those ground ladders for it to qualify. Not only is it a fire truck, ladder truck, but it's also a fire engine, so it's pretty much two vehicles in one and it doesn't just put out fires. So this truck will be equipped to also go to EMS calls. If our ambulances are out rendering care into community, this truck will be able to respond and start care while we receive each leg from another city. So it'll be fully equipped to do advanced life support just like our ambulances are, it just won't have all the equipment and transport capabilities. The truck will also be outfitted to do vehicle rescues and extrication as well as machinery rescue. We're looking to have a meeting with our regional tech rescue team, East Tech, and it's going to collaborate some training possibilities with this truck being used in technical rescue situations. Some of that equipment we've already had that we've transferred over from the last truck. We're looking to possibly seek some grant funding for some additional equipment and then see how that can be used in the technical rescue field as well. That technical rescue has six disciplines, so it's trench, confined space, water, which includes dive and swift water, rope rescue, structural collapse, and then the vehicle and machinery rescue. So if the truck does a lot more than just put out fires, it'll be doing all those things. Somebody else also asked what the difference between this truck was with the old truck as far as the ladder goes. So the old truck was a 75-foot ladder. It was mounted on the rear of the truck, so it swiveled off of the rear and it was a straight stick, so there was no bucket platform at the tip of it. Whereas this truck has that bucket platform, it's also 100 feet long and it's mounted in the middle of the truck. They call it a mid-mount. Having that mounted in the middle and having that bucket on the top and additional length will give us much more accessibility. There's a lot of structures in the community that the last truck could not reach, so now we'll be able to reach them all. And then the last thing was why we called it the unit number 1121. So that's our unit identifier for dispatch. Our city code with dispatch is 11 and then dispatch uses 10 digits to clarify engines, 20s to clarify ladders, 40s to clarify ambulances and so on. So that truck is 11 for our city, two for the ladder and one because that's the first and the only ladder truck we have. If we had a second one, it would be 1122, so that's why it's called the 21. Anybody else have any questions about the truck? Okay, and then I just wanted to take a minute to follow up with Mr. Smalley from First Energy. He's correct that storm season is upon us, so we also encourage residents in the community to report any down wires, power outages, transformers that may be arcing to the fire department as well. We have emergency hotline through dispatch to get those to First Energy, but we also want to make sure that we cordoned off any area, banner tape around any down wires, even foam wires, cable line. If there's an energized power line on those, multiple houses down the road and we have a child or resident who's trying to pick it up and it's just a foam wire, we want to make sure that we keep everyone safe, so we encourage everyone to call us too and come out and take a look. That's all.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perk. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Perk? Okay, very good. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Next up is Service, Mr. McCordy.
Thank you, Mayor. Only one item to report tonight, this weekend coming up, is household hazardous waste and paper shredding weekend as we approach a time change. So on Friday and Saturday, we will be allowing people to come into the service department and drop off household hazardous waste, which includes any kind of solvent, gasoline, fuels. Latex paint should be kept at home, dried out and thrown away with your regular garbage, but oil-based paint and other chemicals like that should be dropped off on this weekend. We will be accepting waste on Friday all day and Saturday from 9 to 1, the paper shredding truck will show up and be on-site shredding paper as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCordy. Anybody have any questions for Mr. McCordy? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Building Department, Mr. Reynolds.
Good, Mayor. Good evening, council. The Building Department's Secretary of Staff is now resuming support duties for the Housing Department. Mailers are going out to residents, informing them of the upcoming exterior maintenance program and they're going to be signed to University Heights Housing Department. The Green Road Metro called for a final inspection of the interior areas. Those areas are all complete. Then they're going to final cleaning, sanitation. After that, their plan is to complete the exterior areas, the fencing and landscaping and then after that, they'll be on our side, fully ready to open and it'll be up to the rabbi to determine what people will be about it. Part of this process is going to be collecting the water that's going to be used and fine-tuning all the other projects that go around that. But basically, the interior's there. Within our department, Jason Monaco, our interim plumbing inspector, has passed the test for the plumbing inspector commercial license. He was required over the past year to complete 75 hours of continuing education and that time he's completed 103 hours of continuing education as a male in that head, so we expect that until you fully certify as a plumbing inspector by November. Court of Appeals will meet next Wednesday, it's March 11th and the Architectural Review Board will meet next Thursday at 8:00 a.m. and that's March 12th. There will not be a planning commission meeting this month. Next, I'd like to give you a permit fee report, our income report. This month, the month of, actually, the month of February in this year, we took in $14,185.99. This compares with February of last year where we took in $12,749.59. So then I looked at the first two months of this year compared with the first two months of last year. This year, we took in a total of $39,497.93 compared with last year, $31,187.5. And may I point out that almost every month over the past three years, our permit fee income has grown and this is without increasing any permit fees or any application fees for any of the boards or commissioners. And finally, I'd like to report to you about our tax abatement program. So far, we have sent seven completed tax abatement forms to the county for approval for a total evaluation of $733,640. Now, that doesn't mean that this is the amount that the county will abate. It's up to them to determine how much the project has improved the home or the residents where this occurred and then abate that amount. We also have two other pending applications that totaled $155,000 for a total between the nine applications of $888,640 in deferred tax. We also have two other applications that need a little bit more information before they can raise. Thank you, please.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. McCordy. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McCordy? Very good. Thank you. Next up is our city engineer, Mr. Chune.
Thank you, Mayor. One item to report this evening and I'm pleased to report it. We did receive notice from Taugood County that we received a grant application that we applied for and that grant is for Prevented Maintenance Reimbursement Program on county roads. Prevented maintenance is crack sealing, it's chip and seal, it's patching, but it also includes striping. They emphasize striping for multimodal facilities, which we have now on Moore'sville Center Road. We applied to put down thermoplastic striping on there rather than just water-based paint. Thermoplastic will last three to five years, we think it'll last five years. It's very expensive to put down and this grant is to pay for the materials for that work. As you know, if you drive it now, Moore'sville Center Road, the paint is already faded so badly that it's hard to tell where the lines are. That won't happen with the thermoplastic. So we are in the process of having our, we have a three-year program for a street strip already in place and so he has to put it down anyway. The labor is already covered under that contract. We're just going to pay for the materials here and put down the thermoplastic striping. Now, it's very temperature dependent, so we probably cannot do it till the end of May, beginning of June. If you noticed, the Cedar Row Project last year that went from Green Road all the way to I-271, that is also just water-based paint. The temperatures were not conducive to putting down the thermoplastic. It's in all the county specs to put down thermal. So that wasn't done, that'll be done also this year if the weather permits. But we are pleased that we are able to receive the grant and the report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chune. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Chune?
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Chune.
That thermoplastic striping is more durable in the last longer period? Or is it more reflective?
Yes, yes, yes. Whatever, it'll be a brighter light and it'll last as long as we need.
Thank you, Mr. Chune. All right, next we have Communications and Civic Engagement, Mr. Cook.
Good evening. In the middle of March, the census will be mailed from the Census Bureau to all residents of University Heights. What we're going to do to follow up on that to ensure that our reach populations are counted is on the weekend of April 4th and 5th, we're going to be hitting the streets and we're going to be reaching out to renters, specifically college students, and we're also aiming to reach out to families with young children. Those populations traditionally are undercounited in the census. It's a very important part of our population here, so if we want to maximize our census counts, I'd have to act really the flood, telling people who live in the city, we're going to go the extra miles. Again, that'll be April 4th and 5th. Hopefully, we'll have good weather for that and we haven't set the time yet, but probably meeting at City Hall 10ish, 11, but we'll get them once we confirm those details, get them out to you and hopefully it's been viewed as possible, can participate and help us improve some folks and we'll get our count up. Secondly, and finally, tonight, it's election season and I'm not talking about school voting or I'm talking about the presidential campaign. I'm talking about Cleveland's team and the end of next week is going to launch their annual best of Cleveland contest. If you recall, Susan and I teamed up last year to get the word out about all the great businesses in University Heights and try to get them some free press, some attention, kind of being like a two-person chamber of Congress. So we're going to be doing that again this year. We've already designed some materials. We hope to have some videos that we did last year and several of you on the dice participated in our Tori's Sales commercial last year, so we're going to repeat that success this year. That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cook? How do we sign up for going door-to-door to encourage people to sign up for the census?
We'll do that on Facebook and we'll also do that via email. So once we figure out the exact date, then we'll do the email, that means the email list that we have. So we'll get the word out several different ways and make sure that everyone who could possibly be interested in doing it does one in where and we'll compile lists.
Okay, thank you. Next is Economic Development, Mrs. Drucker.
Yeah, let's look at it.
Hey, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. And then finally, Housing and Community Development, as I think everyone's aware, Mr. Grogan Myers joined the City of Heights today. He is no longer in our city. There is, there are a number of projects that he had taken the lead on that we've transferred the lead to Brendan Zach. Mr. Zach is not a director of level person, nor would he be anytime soon. However, the work, I can tell you that the work of Housing and Community Development will continue even as we look to reorganize the housing departments in the very near future. Does anybody? Does anybody have any questions for me about that? We could talk more about that. And this is hardly the last time we'll be talking about this. But to be assured, before Mr. Brogan Myers left, we went over every project that he's working on and had a plan for who would be taking up the influence. So nothing is to fall in the cracks at this time of transition. Okay, turning now to, to the force from the Standing Pities, we'll start with Building and Housing. Mrs. Blackfield.
I always get disturbed by the law directors. We did meet with Mr. Brogan Myers as well as the mayor, and he continues to work on... He continues to work on reviewing how that piece of legislation is going to be going to the council.
It's great is that the camera has battery input.
That's right.
So Mr. McCall continues to work on that, and the committee he works with to council. The round registration.
Oh, yes, yes. Very good, thank you. Was there anything else? All right, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Blackfield. Community Outreach, Mrs. Berry.
Thank you, Mayor. The Technology Advisory Commission will meet on March 18 at 6:30 in the annex. All members of council are ad hoc members, so all welcome. We'll have a meeting for an hour, an hour and a half max. And then quarterly meetings for the commission will be set for the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. Berry. Economic Development, Mr. Rock.
Yes, so I'm just now starting on the Economic Development Committee, and I owe Mrs. Drucker a phone call. Thank you. Sorry, didn't get a chance to call you back. So we'll discuss when we can set up a meeting.
Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. There will be a finance committee meeting on March 24, 6:30 at the annex.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Recreatives, Hollister Earl.
Yes, Mayor. I've been in contact with Kelly, and we're putting together a meeting for the end of March to go over rates and the elusive ice rink and dog parks and so on and so on.
Rates for...
Well, you know, you've got, I guess, admission.
For the polling. Oh, okay, all right. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Earl. Safety, Mrs. Berry.
Well, I've met with Tom, and he's too good to know what I need to do. And I plan to set up a meeting with the chief of police and fire in the near future. And we'll find out.
Very good. Sounds like you're all right, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Berry. Service Utilities, Mr. Gould.
You're reporting this time.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Gould. And then finally, Committee on Home, Vice Mayor, Mrs. Weiss.
Nobody can park me.
Okay, very good. We have reached the conclusion of our agenda and of the items that are before us, so there is really nothing left except to ask for a motion to adjourn. So, very good. We have a motion by Mr. Earl, a second by Mrs. Berry before I take the rule. We'll be back here in two weeks. When is that date?
16.
March 16. Day before second half of today, we are back here at 7:00 a.m., so. Oh, before, there's something I forgot. Everybody was in the CIC, planned to have a CIC meeting before the next council meeting. Probably, we don't have much, it'll be 6:30 or 6:00. We'll look and see what's going on. We'll need one item for sure. So please plan on that. And without further ado, Mrs. Thompson, so you call it all the way through.
Mrs. Clayfield? Aye. Mrs. Berry? Hi. Mrs. Wise? Hi. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Very good, we are adjourned.